All right, I'm gonna call to order the Public Health and Safety Committee meeting today. This is in reference to Appealing Ordinance Number 4546 entitled Establishing Rules for Attendance at and the Use of Washington Park and Penalties for Violating Same and for Violating Park Department Rules Concerning the Use of Washington Park and the Zoo. At our last meeting, this was tabled until we had a committee meeting to discuss this so that we could provide minutes and also provide a recommendation back to the council. I know we have several council members here, but let me, the committee is comprised of myself, Michael Mack, and Council President Sean Fitzpatrick. Also in attendance, we have council members Tracy Tillman, Bryant Dabney, Paul Prisbalinski, well, I see, yeah, Paul Prisbalinski, I don't see Don.
Don isn't gonna, he's not able to be here.
And then Councilwoman Dahlia Ziegus, she may join, but I know that she provided some information to Councilman Bryant Dabney to share with us as well. And then from the Park Department, we have the Park Superintendent Ed Shin and Assistant Superintendent Shannon Easton. So just to start, I did have a conversation, and I know that we've had several workshops going back and forth on this. And I did have a discussion after the council meeting with Ed, Ed Shin and Shannon Easton. Just discussing, you know, some of the, you know, some of the issues that they had with it. And I know that we've heard from Councilwoman Ziegus and also from Mr. Mack and Mr. Dabney in reference to this as well. One of the things that we have on the table, and that's why we're talking about this on, we have some amendments on the table for that particular ordinance that Councilman Prisbalinski has authored to try to resolve a couple of issues that came up previously. But this meeting is specifically to repeal that ordinance to allow the Park Department to handle park operations. The conversation that I had with with Mr. Shin and Ms. Easton is that, you know, I shared the concern that the plan that they sent was not really, what it came down to was, it wasn't something that was presented to the Park Department. It was more of an operational notice or email to us about what they would do differently. One thing that they shared with me, which I thought is very important, is that when we, when COVID struck, a lot of things happened and the timing of the executive orders, I have a concern with the executive orders being long-term and continuing to vote on it, but on the timing of the Park Department, the executive orders, the council extending things, it was, it was a lot going on. And I felt that, because I supported the ordinance, I felt that we needed to act because there was so much going on. But I believe that there's an opportunity for us to at least get some type of resolution around, you know, what should happen when an executive order happens, you know, should there be a special meeting immediately, you know, are there things that we can put in place? And I don't know if it has to be done by resolution, but is there a way for us to to move forward? So what I would like to do first is see if anybody from the committee has anything they would like to say before we ask a few questions of Mr. Shin and Ms. Easton. Mr. Mack or Mr. Fitzpatrick, you got anything to add before we move on?
I'll just say, you know, I'm interested to see if the Park Department actually has a difference of operational tactics of what should be done. I'm still concerned that this is an exercise and an autopsy of emergency COVID situations in the past, long past, when this started, that that lent itself to no real answers now. And the time we've spent going over a rule that is not even in effect right now, could have been much, we could have had something happening from scratch. Now, maybe the Park Department will enlighten us on that, but I'm still of the same, same belief that we should start, start with a clean slate and be flexible and have a lot of ability to move left or right immediately as COVID moves and not box ourselves in. So looking forward to the comments from the Park Department.
Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Yeah, just really quickly. Remember, like in through one of the discussions we had about this, someone made the comment that we're trying to micromanage the Park Department. And I completely disagree with that statement. It's more like we're taking the leadership role where there seemed to be a lapse. And it seems like the attempt to repeal what we put in place without even working on it is just something looking to undermine what the, what the council put in favor of, what the park wants to do or what the administration wants to do versus what's best for the health and public safety of the community.
Okay, so before I let the author of the amendment, the amendment to repeal it, let me, let me share the discussion and Shannon and Ed, feel free to jump in. This, what, what we discussed was if there was an opportunity for for the Park Department, the Park Board and the council, if there is ever an executive order, an emergency order, or an act of God, or anything of that nature that impacts the closure of Washington Park, that a special meeting will be called immediately that will include the City Council and the Park Department and their administration. And that we would utilize that immediately to come up with the plan on what's the closure so that we could come up with an agreement, so that we're not, again, the term micromanage is the term that came up, but even when I read it, I'm, I'm gonna say that it is very restrictive in, in operations and COVID was something very particular that happened. And I think if we put some policies in place that we agree on tonight, that we would do going forward when it's something of that nature that we wouldn't have to have an ordinance that's so restrictive if it becomes a policy more so than a law that we govern them by. And more so of, you know, anytime an executive order is enacted, a special meeting is called within two days that includes this, the Park Department, the Park Department, the Park Board and the City Council, whether it's the president, the liaison, public health and safety, whoever that is. But that was the discussion that we had, and I thought it was productive. So I wanted to make sure I shared that with the rest of the council members on what we discussed in that meeting. And that's exactly what we talked about, you know, what could we do going forward that in case of an emergency, regardless what the emergency is, put something, something in place that if anytime an executive order or there is an issue of public safety regarding a closure of Washington Park, that a special meeting will be called with the City Council and the Park Board to do whatever we need to do. And so I welcome comments, but what I want to do is open the floor to the author of the amendment, Mr. Dabney. And then we'll take comments from the rest of the council.
There you go. I'm just, I have the ordinance in front of me. You said there's amendments to it. I haven't seen those amendments. Have you seen those amendments? Anybody seen those amendments?
What's the amendment that was on the agenda last, last council meeting?
What exactly was that? I'm trying to piece it together.
Timing.
Oh, the timing of opening, closing?
Yes.
Okay, which is, which is in my mind, another restriction for the Park Department, because there have been times that when we had warm Septembers and Octobers even, where in the past, they've kept the Park Department or kept the Washington Park open, and were on the weekends collecting fees.
Well, this particular meeting is not about the amendment, that amendment is about the feeling of the, the one that we, we passed.
Got you. So now here's why I say this should be amended. First of all, here's what that ordinance puts on the book right now. This thing is saying that the beach can only be over from 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., seven days a week. With the exception of families residing in the same household, at no time shall groups of more than 10 people gather in the park, including on its beach. At times, physical distancing of at least six feet, this is a COVID thing here, physical distance of at least six feet shall be maintained by everyone in the park, including the beach. The park shall limit parking in the park, not more than 50% of the authorized parking spaces. And I mean, it just goes on and on. It's so restrictive. There is no flexibility in this. Once it is a law, this is what has to be followed. There are, there is no, no flexibility for this thing here. I like the idea, Angie, that you were talking about when you said, you know, if something were to happen where we could turn this way, policy, where we can get together and make some type of policy moving forward. But an ordinance locks in all of these things here. And then knowing how this is going to work, we were talking about checking the stickers and park stickers for just, you know, the folks from, what is it, that have a park sticker. And I know there's estimates of losing revenue during that time from, it was the second week of May into Labor Day. We're looking at about estimated loss of revenue, when we're searching for revenue, about a million dollars. This puts, this goes into effect, it throws these restrictions up on the whole operation. It kills operations because it takes all of this revenue off the table. Because now we're only trying to let in folks that have stickers, which most of them are going to be free, that come from the folks of Michigan City. Obviously, there'll be a few that'll be paid for, but you know, being on the Park Department in the past, that revenue coming in through cars that come in and pay at the gate is a ton of money. They use that to subsidize their operations. And this does that off. So, but these are the reasons why I wanted to repeal it so that we can go to something where we're actually doing policy rather than passing an ordinance like this that could, you know, hurt the Park Department operations. And then I want to, like I said, you told me first, the announce that I had something that I was gonna read from Councilwoman Ziegus, she sent me this. She says, "Ordinance 4546 codifies park beach open and closing times and dates, parking restrictions, entry restrictions, stickers, residency, et cetera, with the uncertainty of the future. Whether related to health or financial concerns, the park administration needs to be able to be flexible to react to changing conditions. The ordinance prevents changes as needs arise." Or, ordinance 4546 allows only sticker holders to access. Once again, shutting out all of that revenue, Michigan City has vehicles and businesses that rely on visitors. These range from large, for example, Blue Chip visitors, to small events, locations, restaurants, shops, things like that. It is not true, and we talked about this, about taxpayers, what taxpayers actually pay and how this covers expenses. It's not true that the property taxes pay for the beach, quote unquote. In 2020, property taxes funded only 41% of the budgeted park expenses, parking revenue in 2020 through the closure in July was 632,400 some odd dollars. And that contributed to 20% of the parking revenue. The parking fees that continue, at those 2019 numbers, a potential loss of revenue would be about a million dollars. Parking fees are obviously crucial to the operations. So we'd be, if we lose a million dollars in funding that goes back into the park to help fund it, now we're looking into riverboat funds or something like that to subsidize even more. And none of these restrictions for ordinance 4546 are based on data, codifying the number of parking spacing, visitors admitted. Should never be done without studying existing numeral data. A reasonable reaction to an unforeseen holiday crowd is to collaboratively meet with the affected departments and strategize a future policy. It is not necessary to reactively pass a law which would encumber addressing the problem in the future. And then she has some numbers here at the bottom that she put together. So I'll just. Can I forward that?
Yes.
Yep, I will. You want me to forward everybody?
Right at the record.
Yeah, I'll forward that to you.
All right, perfect. So if, if I could allow Mr. Shin and Ms. Easton to say a few words, I know, like I said, our discussion, we talked about gate entry, if there were opportunities for, you know, counters, and we talked about what they do with that, but we talked more about policy and what, what we could do to communicate more effectively if this is repealed and what would happen if it, if it wasn't repealed. So I don't know if you have any comments. I was just gonna have, open it up for some more discussion, but wanted to see if you had anything to add since we spoke last.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I have a few comments. As far as the restriction on the hours, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. for sticker holders only, that's gonna limit access to the Festival of Holiday Lights and Fisherman, which right now is a very popular time to fish off the pier and in Millennium Plaza. If we're stay in effect when we open in 2021, not only are we looking at a potential loss of revenue of over a million dollars and take into account we doubled the daily rate, so that's why the number's so high. It also affects the zoo. The zoo's another 20% of our income. So they make approximately $575,000 a year in gate fees alone, not to mention concessions, their retail operations. So that would affect that as well. People can't, if they don't have a sticker, they can't perp to go to the zoo. So just a couple of things I wanted to highlight there. The other, I do agree that the problem's already gone away. So the governance should go away at this point. And as we spoke about, if another problem arises, it could be a pandemic, it could be a natural disaster. That's to address that particular situation and put rules, policies and plans in place to address that specifically. But if you go down to Washington Park, I was just down there, there's probably 35 cars in the main lot and it's 72 degrees outside. So I didn't see anybody not social distancing. There wasn't a huge influx. I know it's a weekday. But I really, the problem has gone away at this point and should be readdressed in the spring if we're still under pandemic conditions. Thank you.
Mr. Shin, you have anything to add?
Yes, I would like to just reiterate that the reopening plan that I said to you folks was a preliminary plan, that that would be something that the Park Department would have no problem with sitting down with all of you and refining that plan. It was a first draft, so to speak. So in the case of Chicago beaches closing down in the future, this plan was designed to be able to gain income from the gates and still comply with the COVID pandemic rules. So just so you remember that that plan was a first draft, it was probably worst-case scenario. Something that the Park Department and the Park Board would definitely like to sit down and and rehash and go over and see if we can refine that plan to where everybody's happy, because I think everybody's intentions are the same.
Thank you. Well, I'm gonna open it up to the, the authors of the ordinance. Councilman Prisbalinski, I know I had one, one question. You know, was the intent to, to restrict only during the pandemic or have restrictions full-time? Because right now, the way the ordinance is set is for full-time. And I just want to make sure I understand what the intent was from the authors. I know Sean and Paul. But I know, I know what the intent was originally, and I'm not sure, I think we may have created a situation that has restricted and regardless of whether there's a pandemic or not. But I do want to allow Paul Prisbalinski to say something, because he, he spearheaded the ordinance to, you know, for a matter of public health and safety, as we start seeing those numbers grow prior to Labor Day. So I think we should allow some time for, for Councilman Prisbalinski to kind of talk about why the ordinance is here and why he made the amendments to move forward, because I think that's important too in this discussion. Do you want to say a few things? Councilman Prisbalinski? You're on mute.
Well, you know, I've heard a lot of comments during this whole discussion. And I am trying to stay positive about enacting something. But I keep hearing now, like, you know, about the loss of revenue. And there's more to this than the loss of revenue, revenue, because we are still under dealing with the pandemic and spiking up on cases nationwide. So it's, it's, I don't foresee it going away, but now I've authored an amendment and to address Mr. Dabney's concern earlier of a sunset clause. So if that was passed, there would be no restrictions at this time, because I talked to Shannon, Assistant Superintendent Easton about what they consider their normal season. And they consider their normal season from two weeks before Memorial Day up until Labor Day, and then that's it. Now, the other discussion by Councilman Dabney about leaving it open during warmer time of the year, well, I guess that we have to set something up because it's not to be restrictive, it's to do something and not stick in, and go forward with something positive to protect the citizens or the beachgoers or the parkgoers right now and in the future, and to make it workable, but, but I see it as not having another incident like we had on July 4th. And that's why I really did this. Because I, we found out a lot of information so far by having these discussions and what was going on there. And revenue is not everything. You have to regulate how many people are in that park. So here's what I will say. I did reach out to Chief Campbell. And he said he was gonna try to be involved with the workshop. And he was, and he was very appreciative that I reached out to him. Because he said nobody had and that he has some concerns on creating a strategy for managing the park. So what was saying now, which I was gonna say this evening, hopefully the chief will be there, that we need not take the attitude that we need to eliminate something, that we need to manicure this thing. And I'm always open to discussion and amendments and, but just being, keep on saying that it's restricting flow, it's restricting people coming, it's restricting monetary gain. Well, that was kind of the purpose of it, so that the the beach can still be used safely by taxpayers of Michigan City. And I would not support doing anything at, at this time until we hear from the chief and get his input. And that, I'm, I'm subjecting myself to his input on what he wants to say about this and, and what was going on in that park, because I want to remind everyone of the mayhem that happened there that we're not talking about because it didn't happen in the park. But you better believe that there was almost 7,000 people in that park. We already know that there was double the amount of cars in there. So I didn't create that. The policies that were in place created it. So if you want to, I don't know how many police officers were down there, because I didn't get that information yet. But the shooting that I'm referring to took, took place on Lake Hills Road or Lake Hills Drive by the Lake Hills School. And I, I'm just saying that people are being chauffeured down there. And people can ignore the fact, but I seen videos from a gentleman that lives over there that the whole area was full of cars, the parking lot, the, the, the grass area, the old mullen school. And I just, I just think of what was going on, that with people closing their parks to the east and to the west of us, which was in the news, and there was nothing done. So, I mean, I'm not trying to micromanage anybody, but I'm also not, not gonna fall in, into the train of thought that we gotta keep closing the park down, we gotta keep closing the park down so nobody can enjoy it. Well, and then we had the administration, and I'm gonna remind you, the administration going around telling people we're gonna get sued because it's discriminatory. It's discriminatory. We, we can't limit people's entrance and exit. Well, we got into, we discussed that. And that was, that's not true. Because if it was true, I guess we'd already have a lawsuit on our laps, correct? I think that speaks for itself. The thing is, is that the park can be open and managed, but I'm not, I am in the point of view that those people on that board are appointed. And that we had two workshops with them and nothing happened, not even an adopted preliminary policy that we could discuss on their thoughts that, that they want to see happen. No, the thought process is, let's just eliminate this ordinance and we're still in charge. Well, what's supposed to be a cooperative effort? And I waited for input from, from them, just like I put the amendment in there for that sunset clause that Mr. Dabney kept talking about. And I saw the, and I saw the policy or preliminary policy, because nothing's been voted on to this date, or even that I'm aware of, that Mr. Shin produced. And if you read it, I don't know, did everybody get a copy of it?
Yes.
Well, I will tell you, from my point of view, is that if you read it and it says in there that they're gonna separate the Michigan City people from the visitors and send the visitors up to Fetter's Alley. I got a problem with that, because they still want to have outsiders coming to the beach during a pandemic. And the underlying issue is revenue. Well, we've been, we have been subsidizing the park as long as I can remember. And now it's not gonna make a big difference. Because I don't hear about shortfalls. So if there's a shortfall, I guess we'll have to address it. But what did bring to my mind is how much money they're taking in there and how they keeping track of it.
That's that's another topic, but I do want to add a couple of comments before I go to Councilman Dabney. Thank you. Thank you, Councilman Prisbalinski. Two things. So when I when I think about repealing of this ordinance, I know we keep bringing up the incident that happened. I see that as a separate item, and I'll say why. So the the ordinance that was presented and that we voted on at the time and looking back and reading it is a restrictive ordinance for the park regardless of the situation. So it doesn't take into account, it talks about COVID. But the rule is in place no matter what is going on in the city, no matter what's going on with COVID, whether the numbers increase, decrease, whether the numbers flatten. Regardless of of what's going on, that ordinance is restrictive regardless of the pandemic. It would have been, I guess, when I'm looking at it now and it was after the conversation, but now we're on third reading and we know how that will go. Now that we're talking about it, and I've had the conversation, my question is, was this this was truly about the pandemic? And not about placing rules on the park for outside of the pandemic? I mean, and am I correct in that? I mean, I think that's what we were trying to do initially. But what the ordinance did is it put restrictions on the park regardless of any situation. And I don't know if everybody realizes that. But that's where we're at now. Let me let me let Councilman Dabney, and I'm gonna come back to you, Paul, and then I'll come back to the committee.
All right. So the sunset clause, as you mentioned, what is the sunset date on this? What was the sunset date on this order?
The sunset date is the in that the time period of when the park is their season, which is two weeks before Memorial Day through the summer to Labor Day. The rest of the year, it's not enforced.
I was I was confused because the sunset clause is like this ordinance is in effect until November 1st. And it's gone.
Right.
So this is just the effectiveness dates of when you want to apply. Sunset date means it's over on a certain date. That's what I was talking about when we originally talked about this. I said, are we gonna just keep this in place until Labor Day and then everything would drop off? Just like we had the conversation in the meeting right before Labor.
Yeah, and we did discuss, you're right, that was the conversation that we had. I think we I think we veered off of it. I think because again, this the what we're talking about now is just again, it's not a restriction on COVID related timing. It's a restriction on the part period that what we passed. And I don't think, I don't know if, I don't, I don't think we, that was our intent. I thought it was all about the pandemic.
I here's my intent is that I wanted to have something in place and I wanted to get it put in place quickly because the administration was doing nothing. And now there's a lot of good ideas that have been put out there, but I haven't seen anybody introduce any amendments to the original ordinance. Now, I put that amendment in under then, and if I meant, if I left out the phraseology that it was during the COVID pandemic, well, that's easily to be put in there. And when we're out of this pandemic, then the restrictions, since that verbiage would be in there, it would relinquish that or the ordinance would basically die. But something would be in place. And I I do want to, I do want to say that I've had a lot of people thank me for getting this thing, getting something going and and keeping it so at least they can drive through and and sit down there and and enjoy the park, you know, the people that live here. And I just wanted to get it open so people could enjoy it and have some sense of security down there. So my my thing is this, is that if the ordinance was still being enforced, there's nobody on them on them gates, Mr. Dabney, all right? And the park board is still yet on the the prior ordinance on enforcing the rules on that adjoining ordinance that which I investigated to enforce their rules. They still haven't made up a sign and put that up down there. So there's a lot of things that need to be done. But I think personally that we need to keep feet their feet to the fire and get something. We can make all those amendments and and those could have been introduced, but I I'll enter, I'll introduce a amendments in if that's, or you can write up an amendment, Mr. Dabney, and introduce it.
Let me step back for a second. I was gonna say, because I know Councilman Mac would like to say something. As far as you know, I talked about policy in in the in the conversation. Because amendments, every time we go through an amendment process, and I don't know if this is a resolution, but or not, but when the governor, we're in different phases of our COVID COVID restrictions. And you know, again, I feel like if there was some type of resolution more so than an ordinance, which is so fine, it's it's so finite on on right now, it's restrictive regardless of COVID. And I guess I'm more along the lines with you know, with the governor having things in place, or if an executive order is in place, how does that impact the park and what do we do and how do we address it? Just like I, we had an example of, we had a tornado come through. They immediately closed down the park, did everything they need to do and did everything quick, fast, in a hurry. Now, now, listening to you, Councilman Prisbalinski, and to you, Mr. Dabney. Yeah, finance, the finance piece I get, but I think that is probably the least. I think the public health and safety piece of it is probably the most important, but how do we do that without handcuffing them on on running the park? Because otherwise, we could be putting these ordinances in place for all of our departments and how they run. I think it's still a policy issue. So I would like to hear from, before I go to, well, I like to hear from Councilman Mac and Fitzpatrick. I don't know, Councilman Tillman, do you have something, Councilwoman Tillman, something to say before I ask the committee to make a recommendation?
So Councilman Prisbalinski, you said that you would make some type of amendment if those were presented to you. And I would be in the agreement as well instead of doing an ordinance if it was done in the resolution. But a lot of those things could be put into that resolution in regards to the sunset. And what other mechanisms that we'll be able to utilize and the information that we're getting back from the Parks Department. One other thing that Ms. Easton that you mentioned was putting this off until the spring. Something needs to be put in place due to that we're still currently in the pandemic. Because putting this off until the spring, sometimes things get put back on the back burner and then boom. If we're still in this pandemic, we're gonna be having the same discussion all over again. So we may have to curtail a little things back to fit what we need for right now. But I think everything would be doable. And I think that, but something has to be implemented, not just something, just for the sake of saying something. But everyone had valid points. And I think that every majority of everything has that has been discussed could be implemented in a resolution from the sunset. The increase in regards to the fees. Also, after Councilman Prisbalinski, we get that information from the chief of police on what role or if any, would they be have an impact into this? And I understand where Councilwoman Deitch was saying, is it the pandemic that we're we're discussing, or is it the other matters and events that occurred at the beach? I would, for me, I would say it should it should be the pandemic. It should be focused for the pandemic and we should carry on and have something in place until the pandemic has been lifted or however the government, the governor decides that we are we're gonna scale back or that everything's all clear. And then, again, if there's any changes that need to be done, then we can do that. And yes, it would definitely be great that whenever there is an executive order put into place that the departments and the council have an emergency meeting to have these discussions and as a whole, in order to come up with a solution for the betterment of the people in our community.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. All right, Ms. Mac.
All right, I got four bullet points, I guess. One is just difficult for me to come up with honest answers for all of these variables without data. Complicated issues like this that I've ever worked on, ever in my life on anything. I've had spreadsheets, numbers, traffic patterns, just a ridiculous amount of data that everybody could actually look at together and filter out what's what's probable, what's possible, what's important, what's not important. Just a general discussion of general pandemics and general mayhem on the beach and overcrowding. I just don't see how you can get to a real nuts and bolts answer without first doing those things. We do have the pandemic and the mayhem and overcrowding. That we can call them two separate issues, but this summer, both of those issues are gonna come. The pandemic is either gonna be red, green, and this is the way I would love to see us address this and try to build a plan that's kind of built into some red, yellow, green type of logic, you know? The pandemic could be decent, but if Chicago and everybody else closes it, it's red for us. Everybody's coming. Has nothing to do with the pandemic. The pandemic could be red and their beaches open. I mean, there's just a trillion variables. And it just seems like us and the Park Department and a thousand pounds of data could come up with, here's what we're gonna do on A. Here's what we're gonna do on B. And that that could work from week to week. We wouldn't have to be having these conversations of what we're gonna do in a large sense over ridiculously varying situations, you know, it depends on the weather, depends on the traffic, depends on their beaches, it depends on pandemic. I would just love to have had that opportunity to digest a lot of data with the Park Department. And I'm I'm sure they've got all that data. Have them put together some type of PowerPoint, have us address their PowerPoint presentation of what they're gonna do, if this happens, what they're gonna do. And of course, you incorporate the police because they're gonna be the most important part to the mayhem piece of this stuff, which has nothing to do with pandemic. Nothing at all. We're the only game in town. We're the only game in town. That's what's coming. And it just, I would just love to have that flexibility. So you know, I'm, that's just my two cents to it. It's just hard for me to come up with a real answer without a lot of in-depth numbers and something that gives us the flexibility to change that easily and quickly.
And flexibility, though, but law is law. And I think that's where all the there, you know, the back and forth is on the restrictiveness of having the ordinance. So with the repealing of this ordinance, and I know Councilman Fitzpatrick, let me let you go ahead, Councilman Fitzpatrick, and and make your comments as a member of the committee.
So yeah, I do agree with, we need to have data and information to make more educated decisions, but I also know that we can get to a place where it's analysis paralysis. We were in the middle of the pandemic at its height. And this was drafted because we had an incident, we did, we wanted to prevent further incident. There was nothing to reassure us by the park board or the park department that they were doing anything to give us the confidence that they were implementing things to make sure that something like that didn't happen again. And as far as just blanket repealing the ordinance that's in place, I completely disagree with that because something has to happen, even if it's restricted only to the time where COVID is a public safety threat. If you know, if a vaccine comes out in two or three months and and everyone is getting well and no one's getting sick and the numbers are declining, then I would be the first one, I would be a co-sponsor to repeal this. But while we're still in the uncertain phase, it seems, it it seems we like we're asleep at the wheel to just say, okay, we're just gonna put a resolution, which is basically just an idea in place of an ordinance, which is something rigid that has to be followed by, you know, the administration to ensure that the 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 best way to deal with it is is actually in place. And if that is something that does entail the park board, the park department, the fire and police, as well as the council and and administration to have a broader discussion to make sure that we're doing what, you know, all of minds involve sees the best course of action, then I'm all for that. But just to say that, oh, well, the way it is right now, we don't like it, it don't work, put too many restrictions. That's that's not good enough because something has to happen. We know that, you know, the season is over for the most part. And, you know, when they put the big signs up there, sticker holders only, I never agree with that part. I think it should have been a specific time where city residents or sticker holders get first priority to enter versus just allowing anyone to enter and take up all the parking spaces, because that's happened. So that was one of the things that I think should have been in place versus just a blanket only sticker holders. Because I do know that it impacts the revenue that the Park Department generates. And, you know, we don't want to have to always subsidize what they're doing if if they could take care of it on their own. But I just don't believe that repealing this and just leaving nothing in place and say, okay, you guys take care of it. Hopefully you do a good job and pat them on the back and wish them well. I just don't think that's the best way to deal with this. So I would definitely think that we should table this repeal until a time when COVID is no longer a public safety threat.
Let me ask a question. Because a couple of things I heard from everybody. So one thing, we all agree that this is a COVID-related matter. I think we all agree that, you know, data is important. But I do believe that this was a one-of-a-kind situation that happened that happened with changes that were happening on a day-to-day basis and rapidly with executive orders. What, and I'm just gonna ask this of everybody. You know, what if there was an ordinance that talks specifically about the pandemic? And that, like, I know Mr. Mac, And that, like, I know Mr. Mack, I'm said, as far as levels. If, if there is a situation where um, we are, you know, the governor has created an executive order that we put some fail safes in place that force the, the Park Department to act on. For instance, allowing residents first, only residents in at a certain, you know, like you said, at a specific time of the day. And then we allow other people up into a certain maximum amount into the park. I don't think we should be controlling the time of, um, the times that they open and close the parks. I just think it's more about numbers and, and following CDC guidelines. I mean, that's my opinion. I, I don't think this committee, because of the touchiness of the subject, should be offering a recommendation on a vote for the repeal of this ordinance. Um, I know that most committees here um, tend to do a vote. Um, I feel that this is important enough that everybody should be making their own opinion and not taking the opinion of this committee. I wanted to have this meeting so that we could just talk through what the concerns were so that people can make an educated um, uh, vote when, when it comes back up on third reading off the table. Um, if it comes off the table, um, for their vote. But uh, for a committee standpoint, I think um, everybody has their own view of it. And I don't think this committee should be uh, driving that answer. Um, and I would like to see if I can get that agreement from Mr. Mack and Mr. Fitzpatrick on the committee.
I agree. I mean, I, I wouldn't want to bias uh, our position or uh, kind of sway the rest of the council. So I mean, we all have enough information and we still get to speak on it at the, when it's discussed again, so.
And I agree, but I wouldn't mind swaying everybody to my.
Long enough. I, I think we've spent a lot of time on this and I think everybody here had, wants the best interest of the citizens. And we look at it from both. I'm gonna allow Councilman Dabney to say something and Councilman Chris Belansky, because they're both, one is, one is authoring the repeal and one is authoring, authored the ordinance. So I'll let you two have the floor and then we'll wrap up the meeting.
I mean, obviously, you know, I'm just like, uh, when we get into, let's just say, when, when the whole COVID thing came up at the beginning, if we would have just gotten together, we could have put together a policy. This is how we're gonna deal with it right now. This is what we're gonna do. And these could have been updated along the way. But like you said, an ordinance doesn't give us any chance to, to move or to be able to adjust, takes away our flexibility. And just to address the whole thing about uh, Councilman Paul Presbylinsky, who threw my name out there a couple of times with safety. In regards to safety throughout the summer, I was like the single councilman that voted every single time that you shut down the beach. Um, so I'm struggling a little bit about the, I'm not looking out for the safety of the people. I'm just saying, going forward, we can all work together in policy. As there's the mayor comes with a, an executive order, if this, you know, the COVID is still around, it could, we can, the Park Department could put in a policy to do the things that we want to do. And then, you know, like we said, like Michael said, red, green, and I didn't get the colors. But as, you know, this, this thing continues to move, what if it's totally off? We, we just don't know that, it's hard to plan for the future. But I know, but since we've seen it and how it hit us this, this past time, that we can come together at any time. Special meeting can be called by the president, like, right away. We can get everybody in the room, say, this is gonna be the policy that we're gonna implement starting right now. Boom, and, and go from there. I just don't think it requires an ordinance because it takes away all of our flexibility. Then if an ordinance comes up, first reading, second reading and so forth. And I mean, now we're looking at at least, was it two readings, four weeks before we get something going? So that's where I stand with it, but I just had to address that about the safety issue because, you know, obviously, that doesn't fit my profile. I voted all summer long, just shut down the beach. So it wasn't about the revenue, it was about the safety of the people.
Yeah, and I, I, well, and I didn't get that from what Councilman Chris Belansky was saying. What I, what, what he was driving was that we, we did talk about revenue multiple times. I, I, I wasn't, I didn't get the, the point that he didn't think you were worried about safety, but I did. We did talk about revenue because quite frankly, we're, we're revenue, we're revenue-driven with the Park Department, with parking and things like that because of just, that's just how businesses handle that. But I, I didn't get that. So hopefully that wouldn't, I don't think that was the intent. But I know Councilor Paul, uh, Paul Chris Belansky, you had something to say.
Well, let me ask everybody that's participating. You know, I offered this amendment so that the timetable would only be implemented through their season. So then that, the ordinance would still be in place and it could only be implemented during their season. Now that gives us enough time to massage this thing and get what we want in, need in there. And for this time period with the language that we want in there with the, concerning the pandemic and this serious threat. And then go forward and then at that time have language in there that it says when the pandemic is considered no longer a major health threat, that this ordinance becomes null and void. And I think that that is workable and we're still being responsible in the Park Department. And people can have their uh, uh, the parking restrictions and everything will be off until, that gives us time till next spring to get something done to, you know, I think there's been a lot of good input in here. And it's not about uh, wanting to tie anybody's hands up. But we have to admit that there, you know, there was some dragging of feet, okay? And things happened. And one, one thing I think is very crucial is what the chief told me, is that we need to sit down and have a strategy on managing these events in the park. And that I, I never realized how this place is overpacked. And it's like, we've talked about this revenue, well, we're gonna have to do something about that be, because either we come up with a strategy or we're gonna uh, uh, pay, who's gonna pay for the police officers down there to make it safe? So see, there's a lot of things that are, information that's coming up through these discussions. And I, I would like, I would hope that we could pass that amendment. Then they could go on with their thing in uh, uh, through the winter and it'll give us time to get uh, some more better language in here. So it is workable and workable for the Park Department. And uh, have the chief's input, because I think that's, you, you know.
Yeah, and I know that, I know that Caleb sent him the, the invite, but he, um, something did come up for him.
Right, so I, I'm, I'm just saying that we, we, you know, we'll get the chief involved and really look at this thing on what's going on down there when they have a, a big events and what they feel they need to manage the situation. Because I, I, I don't know how, I mean, this is my, was an eye-opener for me on how, how many people are, you know, being parked down there and, and uh, you know.
Police department, my question would be, we've always had big events. So strategy-wise, I mean, I think all they did historically was throw overtime at it. I, I don't know if that, I felt like bodies were, were the, were the key. Because we've always had overcrowding during certain um, activities. So COVID is just layered on top of what they should already have in place. And if, if there's no overtime allowed or whatever, that, I think that's a separate conversation. I think that uh, the management of the park is still this responsibility of administration. I think with events, um, most of these police officers, they've been doing this for years. We've, we didn't have fireworks for the last couple of years, but they've been managing that, you know, the, the inflow, the outflow of the park, the restrictions on streets during um, big events. So I'm not sure what else they would add. I mean, he can add to the conversation, but they, they know what to do already. So I think it's more the finance.
He was looking at the fact of all these, the amount of pressure that was put on the, the park. And, and to bring that to light on what's going on down there for them, from their perspective.
Okay, okay, got it.
Thank you.
That works. All right, I'm gonna wrap with Councilman Fitzpatrick, then I'm gonna close.
I don't have anything to add. I just, uh, since we've been on this meeting, uh, Chief Cooney did send an email regarding to uh, their involvement and why they weren't able to make it to this Zoom as well.
Okay.
So you guys will see that and then you'll get it.
Okay, good. I knew they, I know something came up, so I'll take a look at it. So um, with that being said, we're not making a recommendation, but I think it's good information for the public and, and for the council members. So this um, was table until we had this meeting. Because I know that the amendment is on the table for, is on third reading at our next, at our meeting tonight. And that this one may come off the table this evening as well. So I don't know if um, that will happen or not. But um, I did just want to close and thank everybody for participating. Think it was productive. I think we do have time, though, um, to, to work this out and, and create some type of policy for it as we move forward. So I'm gonna close the meeting out at four thirty. And again, thank you, everybody, for participating. And um, hopefully, um, we'll get this resolved and keep everybody safe. Mask up everyone, be safe, social distance and um, and uh, use your hand sanitizers, wash your hands and keep your family safe. Thank you again.